Good evening, Chair. Calls the order legislative session day twenty-three dash zero thirty. I would ask you to please stand with us for the pledge, followed by the opening prayer by Councilmember Bull Sodles.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, we gather today with our hearts filled with gratitude. This week, we celebrate Thanksgiving, a time to reflect on the endless blessings you've bestowed upon us. We thank you for your gift of salvation and your many promises that bring us hope, peace, and joy. May we see this Thanksgiving all we have to be thankful for, in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen. Counsel, before we go any further, I just want to give a quick update on Councilman Guthrie. He's recovering well, possibly be out of the house in the next three to four days, and look forward to seeing him back here on the dais on the fifth. Everything seems to be going just fine. I know that several of you have called and checked on him, he's told me that, so, and he really appreciates that. Agenda item number four, presentation of proclamations, years of service. Mr. Jan Giordano? Mr. Watson? Mr. Reddish? Can I have you come forward, please?
So, folks, good evening. Council, councilman privilege, I guess, right?
Yep.
So, this is where I get to throw the big surprise, okay? So, both of these guys have been wrestling coaches and in the wrestling community for thirty-five years and thirty years. So, I asked Mr. Reddish to come for Mr. Watson to give him proclamation, and I asked Mr. Watson to come for Mr. Reddish to give a proclamation. So, with the help of a couple of people in the audience and all their family members, I got them to both come here without each one knowing. So, this is kind of like the last two years in, in, in planning, waiting for Coach Reddish over here to make his thirty years. So, I, I have a little proclamation I'm going to read. If you guys can hold on here for one second, let's see who's first. Well, what do they know? So, I got to give you another little story. Keith Watson got into wrestling because my senior year, I wrecked the car at the last game at John Carroll. And then I told Coach Giacavetti that, "Coach, I'm not going to wrestle this year." And I did it to him the year before and said, "Coach, I'm not going to wrestle," for whatever reason, I don't know, maybe burnt out. But I told him I'd wrestle my senior year, then I wrecked my car and said I wouldn't wrestle. So, Coach Giacavetti needed a body. He needed a heavyweight. Well, there comes Keith. Keith comes along and wrestles. So, if I didn't quit wrestling, and we, and I always tell them this, if I didn't quit wrestling and Keith didn't get involved, then there's probably a thousand kids that he would not have helped because he got so involved in wrestling and mentoring kids and, you know, youth wrestling, then high school wrestling, then John Carroll wrestling, and he's still involved a little bit in wrestling?
Yeah.
Yeah. So, so, anyway, I, I wanted to recognize Keith, and I'm going to read this. So, whereas Keith Watson is being recognized for thirty-five years of service to Bel Air Wrestling Community, and whereas Mr. Watson began his coaching career for Bel Air High School in nineteen eighty-eight as an assistant coach, in two thousand and two, he moved to his rival, the John Carroll School. At John Carroll, the wrestling program was without a practice space and little to no awareness of the sport among the student body. Mr. Watson, Mr. Watson established a program with, which grew from sixteen to thirty-eight wrestlers to sixty by twenty-two thousand and five. The two varsity teams won the Maryland Interscholastic Association, MIAAB, conference. Under Coach Watson, the Patriots had over two hundred and seventy dual-meat victories, crowned eighteen prep All-Americans, two national championships. Keith never hesitated to support his team physically and financially, and whereas Keith was recognized as Coach of the Year by the Maryland State Wrestling Association, in two thousand and thirteen, he received the National Wrestling Hall of Fame Lifetime Service to Wrestling Award. Keith retired from coaching wrestling after many successful years and has been recognized as a dedicated and passionate wrestling coach. Now, therefore, we, the county, the county council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this twenty-first day of November twenty-twenty-three, do hereby salute Keith Watson, thirty-five years of coaching, and extend our appreciation for dedication to the students of Bel Air and all his financial support. And I give you my deepest gratitude, sir.
Thank you.
Whereas Craig Reddish is being recognized for his thirty years of service to Hartford County Community, and whereas in nineteen seventy-eight, Craig joined the Bel Air Junior League Program and spent many years as a member of the Bel Air Wrestling Community. He graduated from Bel Air High School in nineteen eighty-seven and lettered in football, wrestling, and lacrosse. During his senior year, Craig was a region champion, placed third in the United States. In nineteen ninety-one, Craig returned to his alma mater as a volunteer football coach. After graduating from Towson University, he was a football offensive coach for twenty-two years, an assistant coach for the varsity lacrosse team at Bel Air High School for ten years. In nineteen ninety-three, Craig became head coach at the Bel Air High School Wrestling Team with Keith Watson for over twenty successful years, and whereas Mr. Reddish earned three hundred and twenty-three dual-meat wins and a state dual-meat title in two thousand and ten, he coached four individual state champs, numerous state place winners. In two thousand and fourteen, Craig received the National Wrestling Hall of Fame's Lifetime Service to Wrestling Award. Bel Air High School Wrestling has been honored several times for sportsmanship. In two thousand and twenty-two, Coach Reddish led the team with several assistant coaches to celebrate his five-hundredth win at Bel Air. Currently, Mr. Reddish is the Bel Air High School Athletic Director and Physical Education teacher. Now, therefore, we, the county council of Hartford County, Maryland, on its twenty-first day of November twenty-twenty-three, do hereby salute Craig Reddish, thirty-year coaching, and extend our appreciation for his dedication to the students of the Bel Air. I wanted to give, I wanted to do something, give back to the football players at Bel Air High School because me and Keith played football together, and I wanted to do watermelon and maybe some ice cream. So, probably in two thousand and eight or two thousand and nine, I got ahold of Craig. I said, "Hey, I want to do this watermelon," and, and so the watermelon morphed into watermelon and ice cream, and every year, this, this past year, I wasn't able to do it, but every year except for COVID, I would have all the varsity players, all the JV players, I'd get all the watermelon and gelato ice cream that you can't get anywhere else, and the kids would absolutely love it after the end of double sessions. So, that's your tradition, I hope keeps going when I'm gone, that somebody else does. So, thank you for that. All right, guys, come on in here. I get to look small, too. I like this. And I was a heavyweight with these guys.
Yeah, I'm very surprised at this whole thing. I thought I was coming up here for Craig, and, you know, we had a good time together. Then we became rivals, and, you know, to be able to have the, the Battle of Bel Air, Bel Air versus John Carroll on Friday or Saturday nights, when you pack the gym, and it was just a great time. So, looking back, a lot of fond memories and good to see a lot of familiar faces, guys that I coached with or coached. I'm glad you guys came out. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I, I fell for this pretty hard. I mean, I'm kind of like, ah, it's practice, I won't get changed, we're good, and we go eat, and I keep seeing some different people. I'm like, you guys are all coming, you guys are coming? I show up, my brother's here, like, well, Brian wrestled with Keith in high school, so that makes kind of sense, I guess. So, you know, I thanks Tony for everything he does, and Keith, you know, I wouldn't have gotten to coaching if Keith didn't talk me into taking the head coaching job, and we worked together for years. So, I really appreciate it. It's kind of been my life work. I'm starting my thirty-first year, so thirty years in, we'll, we'll see how much farther it goes, but, you know, thank you, I appreciate it.
Well, let me tell you guys, we, we couldn't appreciate having two great guys like you representing Hartford County, representing wrestling programs, the youth in this county, the number of kids that you guys have touched over the last thirty-five years. I mean, I'm telling you, it's got to be in the thousands. You just don't know how much you guys have made to so many kids' lives and their careers. You guys are, 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 you know, the biggest stars out there, and I wish we had more people like you guys, and, and I'm glad both of you guys do all this service work. So, thank you guys very much, appreciate it.
You guys can leave, too, if you want.
Be it hereby known that the county, the county council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this twenty-first day of November twenty-twenty-three recognizes National Homeless Awareness Month, November twenty-twenty-three, and wish to express our appreciation to all of our partners across Hartford County for offering assisting and housing to those in need.
So, Rob, and my colleagues, and I want to thank you for all that you do for those that need your services, not only at the Welcome One Shelter, but also Hartford Family House. We know that you help these individuals not only get themselves together, get their lives together, but get them in a position to where they're able to get out on their own, and we truly appreciate that, and want to congratulate you at the same time we're recognizing Homelessness Month.
Thank you. I truly appreciate all of your support. Thank you very much. The need is tremendous down in Bel Camp. We can serve twenty-six men and six women only, and down in, at, in Aberdeen, at our family shelter, we can serve forty families at one time, but both shelters stay full. We're told by Hartford County Public Schools that there's five hundred and thirty-one children currently enrolled in our school systems that don't have a permanent address. So, the need is tremendous, and we just appreciate all of your continued support. So, thank you.
And, and I can't not say that Jeannie and I both, Hartford Family House is near and dear to us, so we really appreciate all you do. Anyone, councilmembers, anyone?
I remember the first time I went to Welcome One Shelter when Liz was the, the director down there. That was probably six years ago, and we took a tour with Syab, and, and that was one of our people that we had donated money to. So, amazing the stuff that you guys do there, and, and I'm glad you, now that's part of Hartford Family House. So, thank you for everything you did.
Thank you.
Come back, come back, come back, come back, come back, come back. So, if I may, just at the spur of the moment today, we were planning on doing a recognition in the next week or so, but after realizing the captain's schedule, we thought we would recognize Captain Pete Georgiades today.
So, Captain Pete, Sheriff Geller, anyone else in the command staff wants to come forward? You want to read that?
Night of surprises.
Be it hereby known that the county council of Hartford County, Maryland, on this twenty-first day of November twenty-twenty-three recognizes Captain Peter Gregor-
Georgiades.
Georgiades, Hartford County Sheriff's Office, nineteen years of service, and wish to express our appreciation for your dedication and commitment to the safety and security of the citizens of Hartford County. Best wishes for all your future endeavors, wherever they may be.
I get to go before you, Pete? I just want to say, nineteen years here, serving the citizens of Hartford County, serving our community, and he's had, just in my stay as sheriff, Pete has had some of the more, I guess, demanding assignments, the Southern Precinct, very busy Southern Precinct commander assignment, and then followed by the task force, the Unified Drug Task Force here in the county, and he leaves us as the commander to the Court Services Division, and most people are going to look at that and say, "How can you retire after nineteen years?" Well, Pete did ten years in NYPD, before that, another two in Baltimore, before coming to the Hartford County Sheriff's Office, just sigh of thirty-two years, putting on a uniform, going out and serving the citizens of various communities. But we're thankful that his road led here to Hartford County. I'm honored to have him as a member of my command staff and wish him onto the great life of retirement that he has so well-earned and deserved, and, and thank him for his service. I want to thank the council for taking the time tonight, and I know it was kind of pushed to get it in because we found out Pete was going to head south for a few weeks until his retirement date hits. So, thank you for taking the time to recognize such an outstanding public servant.
Well, I just want to say congratulations to Pete as well. When we first came, I think Pete, you were a sergeant down in the Southern Precinct at the time?
Yes, sir.
And Pete, Pete was a guy whose name came across all the time because he was always out there pushing his troops and making arrests and making good cases, and then he came up through the ranks and made captain, and we were just thrilled to have him as part of the command staff because he was pretty highly respected throughout the agency. So, we're really sorry to see you go, but wishing you well, Pete.
Thank you, sir. Major?
I forgot my speech. I'll just say that when I first met Pete, we worked in CID together, and he was, he was a go-getter. So, he was a lot of fun to work with, and I'm really, really going to miss you, Pete. So, you've met a lot throughout the years, and I hope you stay in touch, and you're still part of the Hartford County family, so appreciate it.
Captain, I wish you well. You've been a great leader with Hartford County Sheriff's Office with your knowledge and expertise that you brought here from New York and Baltimore. It's been a privilege to work with you. I wish you well, and never say never because you could come back. It's happened before, right? So, so, thank you for your service to Hartford County.
And one last thing, if you guys ever have like a, a name that's hard to pronounce and you need somebody, call Pete in Florida because he's great at pronouncing names.
Real quick, I, I want to thank the council, sheriff, major, colonel, and all the citizens of Hartford County. It's been a real pleasure. It really has.
Executive Appointment Mental Health and Addictions Advisory Board may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve the following appointments. Marcy Austin, Andrea Pappas, John Genowitz, Christina Alton, Carly Huber, Megan Deacon, Paul Magnus, Thomas Knapp, Barry Klein, Nolan Robert, Amy Wagner, Robert Hamm, Donald Scholes, Michael Basler, David Carey, Catherine Hart, Allison Healy, Charles Hoopert, Jr., Jessica Kraus, Tara Lothrup, Kevin Mahoney, Eric McLaughlin, Charles Moore, Alicia Myers-Pope, Rachel Peterson, Jennifer Redding, Sean Rutherford, Elliot Slattery.
Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's been moved and seconded to approve the executive appointments to Mental Health and Addictions Advisory Board. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Abstained.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being five votes in the affirmative, one abstention, one absent, the appointments are hereby approved, and I want to thank those of you that showed up this evening. Could you please stand and be recognized? Thank you. Agenda number six, special presentation, Clifton Larson Allen. Bill, can you guys come forward? Bill, you're by yourself this evening.
I am. I live out.
So, Counsel, it's our pleasure to have Mr. Early with us this evening.
Thank you all for having us. I walked into a crowded place. I thought everybody's here for the financial statement presentation. Congratulations to all those outstanding service members. So, I'm here, Bill Early, Clifton Larson Allen. We go by CLA for short. I'm here to present the results of the June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three financial statement audit. So, this is the audit of last year's fiscal year. We're currently almost halfway through the current fiscal year, so this is a hindsight presentation. We review the numbers after they're done. We perform our audit procedures. They close out the books in July through August, and then we show up in August. Through September, working with Robbie Sandless in the Treasury Office and Rick Parnas. The financial is our hard work of that department. We only actually are responsible for the opinion in those, and I'll go through that in my presentation. So, I was assisted by, some of you met earlier, Alex Walther, she's a director at CLA, and Christina Low, they were part of our primary engagement team. We also have other members of our engagement team from our chmonium office, which is our government services team. We do nothing but government audits throughout various states throughout the U.S. I'm going to go through the scope, required communications, and then some issues, and then I'll answer any questions that you may have. The audit of the June thirtieth, June thirty, twenty-twenty-three financial statements, we performed an audit of the county's financial statements as well as the nine-one-one trust. The single audit, which is an audit of your schedule of federal awards, I'll go through that in a minute. We also issued our report on internal treasury or financial reporting and compliance, our letter charge of governance, which is you all as the council members, our agreed-upon procedures over the landfill. We are responsible for the auditor certification piece of the uniform financial report, and then the reexmission, which is sent into the U.S. HUD Department. As the fir-, I refer to the single audit, that is still in process. It's quite a bit of work. As you know, your federal expenditures have gone up over the years, so typically we'd have just the last two programs here, maybe one of those would be tested. However, due to all the volume of transactions and requirements by the federal government with the COVID funding you receive, there are four major programs to test. So, we're in process of finishing that part up, and that will be issued sometime, probably by, I'd say by December fifteenth, we'll issue that to the federal data collection house. Required communication, I'll walk through. We performed our audit, the term reasonable, not absolute assurance over the financial statements, that they were free from any material misstatements. We do assess accounting principles and estimates used made by management during the course of our audit, and we evaluate the overall financial presentation of what's known as the annual comprehensive financial report. We issued what is known as an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. It is the highest level assurance an auditor can give on a set of financial statements. We did have a new accounting policy that went into place this year. It was known as what's called a GASB, the Government Accounting Standards Board issued Statement Number Ninety-Six for subscription-based information technology agreements. So, every government, not just Hartford County, but every government that had any of those had to put them in place. This is anything that you basically have a subscription to for the cloud. You're required to record now as an asset and a liability. We looked at management's judgments and estimates. That is an area that we look at with every audit that we do. The areas that you have are the allowance for uncollectibles incurred but not reported claims as part of the self-insurance, your fair value of your investments, your pension liabilities, and your OPEV liabilities, and then your landfill closure estimates as well. We did note during our audit that we had no significant corrected misstatements. We did have one uncorrected misstatement that was related to the timing of the alternative investment valuation. What that is, is management, in order to get the financial statements issued by the October deadline that they set for themselves, they have to use an estimate. When we come in in September, we're three months after them, we actually have the, some more up-to-date data based on those alternative investments. We then compile a list, we recommend to management, if they would like to make the adjustment, they then can pass on it if they don't want to make the adjustment because the financial statements have already been prepared. As long as the number is below a clearly trivial amount we determine, it's insignificant, and that we just have to report it to you on it does not materially misstate any of the financial information in your financial statements. We had no disagreements with management. Management was very cooperative during the audit process. They notified us that they did not consult any other accountants for the application of any of the GAAP or GASBs, basically seeking a differing opinion from what we may have provided. There was no major issues discussed with them prior to being selected as the auditors. We do go through an independent RFP process every year through Crystal's office and through you all. We do report to Crystal and to you, not to management. Going forward, we have some additional GASBs we'll be issuing in twenty-twenty-five, we'll be working on implementing. The accounting office will get a year off from implementing any new policies and procedures. However, as I have on the next slide, we as auditors don't. We have to, there's some new auditing standards next year that we have to implement regarding SASS one forty-five and one forty-three, they're called, regaining accounting estimates and the IT procedures. Really going to be no impact to the county. We're going to have some additional work on our side for some documentation, but from you all and from Treasury, they won't really see much of an impact because, again, these are things we're already doing with a county of your size, and then that, that is our audit approach, too. We always involve our IT auditors in our processes. So, that is kind of a high-level overview of the financial statements. I will stop and answer any questions that anybody may have.
Thank you, Bill. Counsel, Mr. Pennman? Bill, I thank you for taking the time today and just sitting down and answering some of the questions that I had because it is a lot to comprehend. I also want to thank the previous county executive, Barry Glassman, for that budget, and the overall net position of the county improved by sixty-nine point four million, which is illustrated on page one of the summary. I noted a total change of assets and liabilities, which I believe is a clear sign of financial health for this county. Would you agree with that?
Yes.
All right. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. Pennman. Anyone else? Mr. Jan Giordano?
Do you guys do forecasting, too?
We do not do forecasting as part of the audit.
Okay. So, but do you do forecasting for the county government at all?
Not for the county government, no.
No? Okay. Do, do we have anybody that does forecasting, or is it just done by, done by us that then would do the forecasting of revenues, projections coming out next year or, or something?
I would defer that answer because I don't know definitively who they use, if they do use an outside party, but it's obviously done by Treasury at some level, whether they do it internally or whether they consult with an economist, I'd have to defer to them for that.
Is GASB and FASB that much different?
Uh, yes.
It is.
The principle of underlying accounting is kind of the same, but there are a lot of differences within the actual accounting principles.
I get stuck on a lot of those.
Yeah. So, FASB, again, for those who don't know, that's the financial for any non-government. Yeah. So, FASB, again, for those who don't know, that's the financial for any non-government entity, and then GASB is for the government entities. Do they mirror each other? Like, if one puts in a system that says you've got to record all leases, does the other one follow? Typically, GASB will follow FASB, but when it comes to the financial reporting model, FASB is typically all full accrual, and where GASB has different levels of modified and full accrual and budgetary, which is what you all use on a daily basis to kind of manage the county's finances. So, there are a lot of differences. You'll see people that do GASB can also quickly pick up FASB, but it doesn't go the other way around necessarily.
Thank you, Bill.
Yep.
Anyone else? Thank you for today, Bill. Appreciate it. Stay in touch. I'm sure you will.
We will. Anybody has any other questions later on, we're always glad to come back and answer your questions or have a meeting as needed via Crystal's office.
You charge for that?
So, part of the kind depends. Crystal and I talked about it today. It depends.
Okay. So, I'll find out if you charge before I come ask a question.
Routine questions typically, no, but I think there was some discussion of other projects, so.
Thank you, Bill.
Okay. Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Yes. Agenda item number seven, approval of minutes. Public hearing November 14th, 2023, legislative date 23-029, November 14th, 2023. Are there any corrections to the minutes? There being no corrections, the minutes staying approved. Mr. Jan Giordano, please read Resolution 040-23 and 041-23 into the record.
Resolution 040-23, Enterprise Zone Tax Credit 2007 Cedar Drive Edgewood, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to approve a real property tax credit against the county property taxed imposed on all eligible assessment for property in the Edgewood-Joppa Enterprise Zone, known as 2007 Cedar Drive Edgewood, Maryland 21040, LIBER 14770, FOLIO 00210, tax ID number 01098861, lot 1-217/44, Copper Mine Athletic Fields, 35.02 acres, presently owned by Washington Court Partners LLC.
That's 35.082.
35.082 acres, presently owned by Washington Court Partners LLC. Public hearing scheduled for December 19th, 2023, at 6:45 p.m. in East Council Chambers. Resolution 041-23, Enterprise Zone Tax Credit 755 Chelsea Road Aberdeen, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. A resolution to approve real property tax credit against the county property taxed imposed on the eligible assessment for property in the Greater Aberdeen-Haverde Grace Enterprise Zone, known as 755 Chelsea Road Aberdeen, Maryland 21001, LIBER 15745, FOLIO 00496, tax ID 02-060876, lot 2, Final Platte 217/82, Perryman Industrial Business Park, 17.7347 acres, presently owned by FRP 801 Chelsea LLC. Public hearing scheduled for December 19th, 2023, at 6:45 p.m. in East Council Chambers.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Agenda number nine, introduction of bills. Bill, excuse me, would you please read that in?
Yep. Bill 23-036, Human Relations Commission Membership, introduced by Council President Vincenti at the request of the county executive. An act to repeal and reenact with amendments, Article 36, Human Relations Commission of Part Two, notwithstanding adv-
Excuse me. FBI.
Ex, I was just, okay. XBI, Human Relations Commission of Part Two, non-binding advisory boards of Chapter Nine, boards, commissions, councils, and agencies of the Harford County Code, as amended to correct the membership consistent with the Harford County Charter and generally relating to the Human Relations Commission. Public hearing scheduled for December 19th, 2023, at 6:45 p.m. in East Council Chambers.
Thank you. Agenda number 10, introduction and consideration of amendments. We have none. 11, call for final reading of bills. Bill 23-033, refunding bond bills, may have a motion.
Council President, I move to approve Bill 23-033.
May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pennman. It's moved and seconded to approve Bill 23-033. Is there any discussion? Ms. Dixon?
Mr. President?
Aye.
Mr. Pennman?
Aye.
Mr. Jan Giordano?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Bull Sodles?
Aye.
Mr. Bennett?
Aye.
There being six votes in the affirmative, one absent, Bill 23-033 is hereby approved. Agenda number 12, enrollment of bills. Bill 23-033, refunding bond bills is certified as being the text finally passed. Thirteen unfinished business we have done, fourteen, or excuse me, fourteen new business we have done, seventeen comments from input from attending citizens. Ms. Dixon, do we have anyone signed up?
We do. Mr. President, we have one this evening, John Malamo.
Good evening, sir. Name and address, please.
Well, sir, good evening to you and your colleagues. John P. Malamo, 2402 Eagleview Drive. I think I'm three speakers this evening, first, last, and only. Do I get more minutes? Briefly now, Harford County Airport owners wanted to expand their operation into the Ag District. Harford County Council changed the code to accommodate. In the amended code, there was then established a commercial operation, which described the airport and included approach and landing paths. Also, the land upon which the commercial operation is conducted upon in the Ag District is strictly limited. There can only be as much land used in the Ag District as is used in the industrial district. Changes to the zoning code are for someone. On its face, the change appeared to be all that the owners wanted. A closer inspection shows otherwise. No matter, the sitting council patted themselves on the back, allowing how they had done a great deed for Harford County. The airport owners applied for a special exception to operate at General Aviation Airport, expanding their operation into the Ag District. They had already obtained approval for the, from the MAA for the airport layout plan, which most accurately described the commercial operation and included hundreds of acres in the Ag District for approach and landing paths. The site plan submitted with the application for special exception did not include the approach and landing paths, showing only a total of 37 acres in the industrial, general industrial district, significantly less than used in the Ag District. Planning and zoning recommended approval. The land required for the commercial operation was hidden. Board of Appeals' approval for use and access to land which did not belong to the airport owners was not provided. The hearing examiner recommended approval. The Board of Appeals ratified and adopted as its own the recommended decision. The airport owners group did not appeal. All administrative remedies had been exhausted at that point. The Board of Appeals' decision was petitioned to Circuit Court of Harford County for judicial review. Board decision was affirmed. The airport owners got no relief from the zoning code or special conditions or the special exception, and did not appeal that decision. All judicial remedies had been exhausted at that point. More on this next, next meeting. And finally, I'd like to wish you and your families a happy Thanksgiving, and to all the residents of Harford County. And I would ask for the prayers to lead the world leaders to a path of peace. Thank you. Good night.
Good night, sir. Thank you.
There are no more speakers, Mr. President.
With no more speakers, we'll go to number 16, business from council members. Mr. Bennett?
Hello. Good evening. It's good to see you here tonight, and for those who are at home as well. It's been a busy week. I attended the Abingdon-Bellcamp Perryman CAB meeting, which was well-attended. We had the Director of Planning and Zoning, Shane Grimm, there. That was a really informative conversation. For those in the community who don't attend CAB meetings, one of the things I really personally enjoyed about tonight was it was an opportunity for the community to have a back-and-forth conversation with Mr. Grimm, and I found that to be really educational. A lot, I think a lot of fruitful conversation came from that. I also attended Career Night at OPR Elementary School, which was fun, because basically I, I changed my clothes and became Council Member Bennett for the evening after being Mr. Bennett all day at OPR. And then also, I attended the Havdi Grace Oyster Feast, which, for those of you who don't know what that is, it's a yearly tradition in Havdi Grace where people pay tickets, and you have this awesome meal, and half of your ticket goes to the nonprofit of your choice in Havdi Grace. So, that's always a lot of fun. It's a great community event with music and dancing and food and a lot of Buffalo plaid. So, you know, it's one night a year, my wife and I both wear Buffalo plaid. I also just want to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. You know, find a way to support the community, find a way to, to feed someone else or provide company to those who might not have it. Sometimes we take those things like food and fellowship for granted, and not everybody has it. So, find that organization local in your life that helps people with that. Then, you know, come support our small businesses on Friday and Saturday, you know, do some local shopping. Not everything has to be done on Cyber Monday on Amazon, you know, go shopping, buy some local restaurant gift cards, take advantage of those deals. Big congratulations to the Havdi Grace High School Lady Warriors for their state championship. That was huge and very, very exciting to the entire community. Their coach is the mom of a former student of mine. Ms. Cittagio is amazing, and her kids are amazing, and I'm not surprised at all that she was able to coach state champions, just knowing the way that she coaches younger children and raises her two sons. And then, lastly, I just wanted to update the community. I know there's been a lot of concern in the past week about a letter that was sent to, to us and to the county executive and the mayor of Aberdeen. I want to let everybody know my office has now talked to the State Office of Refugees and Asylees twice, and it was very fruitful conversation. And just this afternoon, they shared with us again, they said that this, you know, bus of people coming to Bellcamp is definitely not happening. That's just some sort of effort to stir controversy, and that the claims within the letter are most like, most definitely illegitimate. So, that was encouraging to hear. I hope that puts people at ease in just knowing that there's no chance of this happening anytime soon within Harford County. The person we spoke to earlier, or I should say, late last week, shared with us that there's no known program in their office that would lead to people being brought to Harford County. The county that they would most likely bring people to is Montgomery County because of its location relative to DC. So, I just wanted to share that information, because I know it's been a lot. I've gotten the, the phone calls and the emails of the heartache and the confusion, and I just wanted to help put people at ease who might be concerned about that. That's everything for me tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Ms. Sodles?
Good evening, everyone. With the start of the holiday season, we have many exciting community events coming up. November 27th at 6 o'clock at the Harford County Public Library, there will be a winter green screen photo event. Stop in, choose from a variety of backgrounds, and they'll email you the, the photo, and you can use it on your holiday card or wherever you'd like. I'd like to wish everyone a happy and healthy, safe Thanksgiving. Grateful for my family, friends, and all of the colleagues. So, thank you. Enjoy.
Thank you, Ms. Sodles. Mr. Riley?
Ribbon cutting at ExGolf and Festival, and I'm sure Tony is going to talk about that. Wish them the best here in Harford County. Also, at the Harford County Farm Bureau, we celebrated the 100th, 100th anniversary banquet Friday night at Pondview Farm. Want to congratulate the Farmer of the Year, Bear Harland. Also, they had four Harford legacy farms that were recognized, which means that you have been in the family for over 100 years. That was Galbreth Farm and Street, Patrick Meadows Farm in Darlington, Locust Hill Farm in Churchville, and Dunkell Farm in Joppa. Also, Steppingstone Farm Museum had an annual brunch. I also received several inquiries in reference to the, of recent migrant, immigrant families. I reached out to Mayor McGrady of Aberdeen, and I'd just like to read for the record what he's, what he's wrote back to me. From Mayor McGrady, "Hi Aberdeen folks. I'm trying to keep the excitement level tramped down around a situation I've been dealing with this week. I wrote this statement to the local news after Harford County Councilman issued a press release wrongly criticizing county executive Bob Casely. I'm all about holding politicians accountable, but not at the expense of the truth. Aberdeen and Harford County don't have the resources to handle two hotels entirely full of recently migrated immigrant families who were bussed to New York City, so I worked to get to the bottom of this email below that I received on Saturday." The press statement was on Saturday, 11:43 on November 11th, 2023. Mayor Patrick McGrady received an email from Mohammed Moses Fomli, who claimed to represent an organization called the Greater Baltimore Area Motel Consortium. His email claimed that this consortium had been working with the state of Maryland and the mayor of New York City to provide housing, food, security, and case management services, specifically at 980 Hospitality Way in Aberdeen. Specifically, Mr. Fomli indicated that this site could house as many as 115 families of primary Spanish-speaking migrants eligible for temporary protective status for a period of one year. Immediately, Mayor McGrady sought to find answers to many of the questions raised by this email. Mayor McGrady involved the Aberdeen Police Chief, the Director of Planning, the Harford County Executive, and this email chain to collaborate in ways to learn more about this proposal before it became a reality. By Monday evening, lots of the emails were circulated among different groups, trying to get to the facts of the matter. On Monday evening, at the regular meeting of the Aberdeen City Council, Mayor McGrady informed the Aberdeen City Council of the email received on 11/11/23 and the efforts to learn more about the situation. On Tuesday morning, Mayor McGrady spoke on the phone with Harford County Executive Bob Casely to discuss the email and the steps each were taking to learn more about the problem and inform all the relevant government entities, showing store preparation for the potential challenges to come from the relocation of these migrants to our community. Mayor McGrady and County Executive Casely agreed on the seriousness of this matter, agreed to work together to try and understand the situation so we could stop it before it became a reality. By Tuesday afternoon, the manager of the Comfort Suites at 980 Hospitality Way in Aberdeen confirmed that they would not be participating in New York's refugee program. Also, on Tuesday, Mayor McGrady received a call from Harford County Sheriff Jeff Gaylor with questions about the email. Mayor McGrady forwarded the email to Sheriff Gaylor. On Wednesday morning, the Office of Westmore, the Governor of Maryland, confirmed to Mayor McGrady that the governor is not aware of any plans to house any migrants in Aberdeen. So, as my councilman from, from F said, there's no, there's apparently a false story that was put out there by, according to Mayor McGrady, somebody on this desk. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Mr. Jan Giordano?
Thank you, Council President. So, I attended the, the grand opening of ExGolf and the Festival. So, the sign's been there for a long time, and I kept wondering, when, when is this thing going to open up? So, actually, it finally opened up the other day. Interactive golf, the balls come up, put on a tee. I hit a bunch of golf balls, not as far as I thought I was going to hit them, so I'm going to have to go back tomorrow and try again. So, look forward to doing that. Went to the Harford County Farm Bureau banquet and annual meeting with a couple of my other colleagues from the council, and then 41st Annual Harford Sheriff's, Harford County Sheriff's Toy Drive is December 9th from 12 to 4 at Friendship Wine and Liquor's in Abingdon, Maryland, and Santa will be there. So, if you want to see, bring your kids to see Santa, he's going to be there. Small Business Saturday, Bel Air's got a lot of small shops and stores. You'll, you'll find a lot of people downtown on Saturday soaking in the, the sights and all the Christmas decorations. And then that's also the start of Winter Wonderland. That's going to run from November 27th through January 1st. The carriage ride, horse carriage rides are going to start the 27th on Saturday and run through December 18th. So, there'll be every Saturday. And then I, also, I went yesterday, attended the swearing-in of the new chair or mayor of, of Bel Air Town, Bel Air, which is Paula Edding, and the new commissioners, Stephen Chismore, Rich Rutledge, Jim Rutledge, and Jacob Taylor. So, next on the list is December 1st, the Bel Air Parade, and we start giving out money for the 12 Days of Christmas. So, for one of the, CYAB does, starts doing 12 Days of Christmas. We pick 12 local charities that we want to donate money to that maybe didn't get some this year, and we'd like to go out and surprise them and give them a $1,000 check. So, we look forward to doing that. Last year, I think we made it to 15 days. So, we're looking forward to doing that. And that's it. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Mr. Jan Giordano. Mr. Pennman?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. President. I want to point out a major liability for the county, and that is the county attorney. As many may know, the court ruled that the Avenue Woods Project can move forward. What's alarming is the facts that were described in that court opinion. If you were to read the court opinion, there's several items in there that, again, are alarming. Some of the citations from the ruling, county failed to follow court orders, county never did any fact-finding that was required by the court, which is repeat practice because that was the same case with the warehouse bill. Court ruled that the county committed an unwarranted revocation of permits. When questioned why the permits were revoked, the county attorney stated that they're just pieces of paper. This, too, is a trend that has continuously occurred and is disrespectful to the system of government that we have in place. In one aspect, I believe the county attorney openly misled the court by stating the project did not have final approval, which in fact, the court opinion affirmed that they actually did. And it should be also noted that this lack of integrity from the county attorney has been a course of conduct. He's misled the council on several occasions with misappropriation statements, and the latest from retaining counsel. And opinion in this case was damning and embarrassment for the Harford County government. The county attorney's behavior is alarming and stands in direct conflict with law and order and policy and procedure. The question is, what's next? What's next to be labeled a piece of paper? Is it the legislation here that is passed by this council? Is it the zoning code? Is it the county charter? We should not be making up rules as we go. Unfortunately, I believe the county administration, policy, and behavior of the county attorney will undoubtedly cost taxpayers dollars in needless lawsuits. In reference to the undocumented immigrants that were discussed, I'm glad that council members acknowledged there were discussions taking place. And if we reached out to Mohammed Fabi, he had been in dialogue with several of the hotels here in Aberdeen. And I think it's important to include the community if we're having conversations with hotels to bring undocumented immigrants here to our county. Just in comparison, if we're doing a development project, before the development project's plans are approved, before it goes to DAC, what do we do? We have public input. So I felt it was important to provide, you know, a measure to make the public aware so they can provide input, and I stand firm on that. On a more positive note, I also want to congratulate the Harford County Farm Bureau for celebrating 100 years, and also William Amos Harlowe for becoming the Farmer of the Year. With that, that's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Pembent. We'll go to agenda number 15, business from the president. I, too, attended the Farm Bureau banquet. They're an outstanding group. They continue to provide ways to enhance our legacy, our heritage, our farming heritage, and support the farmers, and I want to congratulate them on their 100th anniversary. This past Friday, Councilman Janjordano and I had the honor and the privilege to attend the National Adoption Ceremony at the ceremonial courtroom, and Judge Kurt and Judge Carr presided. And there were six families that opened up their hearts and their homes to provide a loving, caring, safe home for seven children, and was honored to be there. Also, I want to remind everyone that we will have our next APFO meeting, December 20th, 6:00 PM, in these county council chambers, 212 South Bond Street. So it will be open to the public, and there'll be more discussion and dialogue. And then yesterday, I had the privilege again to serve with a fantastic group of volunteers in Haverd Grace that for, I want to say decades, have been putting on a Thanksgiving dinner for those less fortunate or those that need. And we started cooking turkeys on Monday and did two rounds of turkeys, about 80 turkeys or better, carved them. They finished them up today. They will be moved to the community center, and we will serve 1,500 meals. So I want to give a shout-out to Don Osmond, Fred Wills, two of the big organizers, Willie Norrie from Coakley's, Bruce Clark from Laripin, Rodney Swam from Ergler Electric, Chris Garlato from the Haverd Grace Marina, Garrett Pencil, and Chip and Darlene. That's the core group that I work with, but there's dozens and dozens and dozens of volunteers that put this event on. So with that, I want to wish everyone a very, very happy Thanksgiving and a safe, safe holiday weekend. With that, we'll adjourn the meeting.